Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Worcester City Council held this Monday, October 3, 2022. We're in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting scheduled is Monday, October 17, 2022. Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
And Ms. Warden.
Here.
And we're all here, meaning we definitely have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I'd ask you to join city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without any division, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now look to approve the minutes of the September 19, 2022, meeting. I entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sanders to approve the minutes of last meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Minutes of September 19, 2022 have been approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. I hope you survive the Worcester Fest. We had great weather and the Hurricane Ian didn't touch us because it seems like frequently when we have Worcester Fest, we seem to have monsoon season. So we had beautiful weather and I'm sure it was a resounding success.
It was a resounding success, and that actually is my leadoff statement to council. I wanted to start off with thanking the Worcester Area Chamber of Commerce and all those who volunteered to help put on a wonderful Worcester Fest celebration in our downtown this past Friday and Saturday. The weather was decent, the entertainment was good, and the crowds were almost back to normal. It was a fun and successful couple of days in our city. We appreciate Samira Zimmerly and the chamber team for organizing and running the event again this year. Main Street Worcester held its annual beer, wine, and more fundraising event on Thursday, September 22 on the south side of the square. It was a well-attended gathering and raised funds to help Main Street do good things like farmers market, music on the square, Kids' Day, et cetera, that keep our downtown vibrant and full of fun activities. There was a nice dedication to David Braille on Saturday, September 24 for all his leadership, funding, and guidance to the Wayne County Historical Society located on East Bowman Street, just north of the Catholic Church. They are having, they have amazing displays of our community's history throughout the historical society's campus. It was well organized and a true tribute to the people and events that have made our community what it is today. You should check it out. It is really well done. I want to again send thanks to the Noble Foundation for creating the Alice Noble Ice Arena that celebrated its 20th anniversary on Sunday, September 25 with a free skate for all between 2:00 and 4:00 PM. We really have a unique gem in our community in our size having an ice arena. Tomorrow, I will be attending our annual, the annual Heritage Ohio Incorporated event in Toledo, Ohio with a number of others from our city. Heritage Ohio is the parent organization of the Main Street programs throughout the country. It is Ohio's annual conference to share ideas and network with other Main Street organizations throughout the state. I always come back with new ideas and renewed energy for our community. And tonight, we have another fairly long agenda, but they are starting to get a bit shorter, so I think we're heading in a good direction. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, President Biden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any petitions this evening, and not only did no one sign up to speak, I don't think anyone from the public is here. Everyone is either an elected official or a part of the administration. So moving down the committee reports, none. We were scheduled to have a committee meeting, but that didn't happen. No public hearings, so we'll transition to item six, to unfinished business, which is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-25. It is presented by Mr. Reynolds. But before we get there, Mr. Apollo, take a deep breath and please read the title.
Ordinance number 2022-25, creating the Oak Hill Tax Incremental Financing Incentive Districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district, and providing for compensation payment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours. And thank you, Mr. Apollo.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. We talked about this at our last meeting. This is kind of the capstone that ties together the TIF project that's been underway for the last year. We've passed legislation to create the framework for this. We've spent some of the money already for this in terms of the improvements. This actually creates the TIF incentive districts, and there's a total of five of them as shown on that map, that provides the funding mechanism for how the city of Worcester recoups the funds that we're spending out to make these improvements. Once again, we need to leave this on second reading because the annexation is not official until Wednesday, but our next time around, we'll be looking to have this adopted.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We'll note that ordinance number 2022-25 had its second reading. Also on second reading is resolution number 2022-39. It'll be presented by Mr. Cavan. Before I get to you, Mr. Cavan, would you please read the title of that resolution?
Resolution number 2022-39, a resolution appropriating additional capital funds for the Fire Station 1 renovation and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I had spoke with the administration concerning this particular resolution, and we had talked about possibly moving this, putting this in the budget and having a thorough discussion at that time. So I think the appropriate thing to do would probably be to table this for now, and we can have that conversation when we have, again, the budget committee meeting.
All right.
So I would make a motion to table.
All right. Motion to table by Mr. Cavan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the motion to table?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number 2022-39 is tabled. New Business, first resolution under New Business is number 2022-45. It'll be presented by Mr. Cavan. This one is budgeted. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2022-45, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to modify a contract with Moll and Weifman Architects to add additional services allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. With this, the way I understand, there have been some changes talked about with the architects. I'm not, to be honest, I'm not 100% clear what all of those are. I was hopeful I might be able to get a little bit of explanation from administration on what some of these items would be. I'm reading through. I see the modification and the additions, but I was hopeful we might get more of a firsthand explanation if we could. Joel?
I can start with the summary and she's had the details. So we did request for proposals for architects for this project. We asked for proposals for all of the various services that would be needed during the project, so the design, part of it, the construction drawing, procurement phase, bidding, and then also construction phase, dealing with RFDs, coming to meetings, resolving issues, addends, those kinds of things. All standard things that we typically have during a, you know, during a project of this size. We only entered into a contract and asked for authorization at the time for the design services initially. So that's what we had entered into a contract with them for at that time. During the last several months, as we kept having them go back to the drawing board, have them, you know, have them refine things as we were trying to do some value engineering and get the cost down, and then obviously as costs have continued to escalate. So we got to this point where the overall cost for the project is more than what we had originally anticipated back about a year ago when we initially anticipated this. So with some of the changes and the cost, their design fee is based on a percentage of construction cost. So that's, that's one piece of what we're asking is just to increase that design cost to get us the rest of the way through design and construction documents. The other two pieces of that that are on there, procurement services and construction management services are just services we had not asked for authorization yet, so we're asking for those now to do this all the way through that process at this time. The overall is, if you add all of those together, it's about 10% of their fee is, and I know we were talking before the meeting with Mr. Sanders, it's pretty normal on these types of projects for the engineering or the architecture engineering fee compared to the construction cost. That's a little under 8% for, for the design piece and just under 3% for the procurement and bidding phase. And then altogether, that's, that's just, just right around 10% of the cost.
Okay. Did anyone have anything to add or have any questions?
Just real quick, Joel, if this is a budgeted item, is it, you're asking for new money and new parts of the contract, so how is it budgeted?
So we had money budgeted in our contract originally for the project, including designing architecture, engineering, and construction. We didn't have the full amount, $5 million budgeted. So we had anticipated early on that we would, that we would be coming to you and asking for additional money appropriating to go ahead and bid it this year. So that's why we had that previous legislation teed up and ready to go. But as we worked through the summer on that, on getting to that point of getting to the final design, that's when it became apparent, we're not going to be able to bid it this year. It'll be after the 1st of next year. That's why we requested just table that other piece of legislation that was, that we had ready to go, you know, and then now we know we're not going to make it. So there's no sense in appropriating that money and then just sitting on it. Might as well just rebudget for the full amount next year like we typically would do. So we still, there's money in the budget for-
It just wasn't for these activities.
It was for design services and it was for, and for construction. So we had $2.5, $3.5 million budgeted.
But significantly under budget.
Well, we're not, we're not building any.
The new, the new cost is going to be-
Correct. That's what we were going to ask for appropriation, but at this point, timing wise, it's not, oh, about a month ago, we had a, or maybe a little less than that, we had a meeting with the architect, and there's no way we're going to get it ready to bid this year. So unfortunately, we already had the other legislation in the pipeline, so that's why we asked, for that to be tabled. But we were always planning on coming forward and asking for, you know, at some point in the project, these services to get us through design, bidding, and construction.
You said the designer, the architect, is about 10% of the construction. I'm assuming that, that these fees now are based upon and billed upon that 10%, or are they billed on an hourly basis? How does that work?
So their overall contract is a percentage, but they bill us on a percentage basis as they go along. So they're keeping track of hours based on the percentage of work done. They bill us up to that maximum amount.
And based on future construction costs, could this go up at any point?
Yes. I mean, it's theoretically, I'm hoping we're, we're past that point at this point, but I mean, Mr. Sanders probably knows good as anybody about where construction costs and things like that are. I will say, we've had discussions with them, and we feel we're through the changes phase that we've been, so we would not anticipate much, if anything, just based on our conversations with them at this point, because we're far enough through the design at this point.
I'm just a little concerned because of inflation and difficulty getting materials and that kind of thing. I don't want to end up with even more architecture design costs down the road based on increased construction costs.
We expressed the same thing with them when we had our status meeting.
Well, are they willing to cap their service costs then?
That's just what I was going to ask. It's not a guaranteed not to exceed price.
It's a good question.
It's a percentage and based on hourly, so if it's, if they haven't used those words, it's not guaranteed. It could go up.
Correct. But we told them that we did not want to come back to council again, if at all possible on this, so they, they understand that.
If we have to come back, make sure they're here too, so we can question that.
I told them that as well. I said that exact thing to them. I said, if we have to come back, you're coming to council.
Just tell them this, if they have to come back, the answer's no. We've now done a unilateral guaranteed not to exceed. Has any consideration been given to, like, you know, what can I do with maybe $3 million to fix up this building?
Oh, that's part of the reason we're having-
Why, maybe another opinion? I mean-
Well, that's actually why we're having these conversations, is because we sent them back to the drawing board several times and revised the design for that very reason, to try to get the minimum we needed. And that was part of that presentation that Barry gave back in June, where he went through all of those alternatives that we did.
All based on, well, good work on you guys as part from a value engineering standpoint, working with the one firm. I mean, maybe another firm has a different idea on what we could do on a, give on a different budget.
So legally, we can't really do that. Based on the procurement law in Ohio for, for us, we have to pick a firm based on qualifications. Then we can negotiate a price with that firm. We get to the point where they're not meeting, you know, our expectations, or there's something, only then could we, and they have to breach the contract basically, could we then go to another firm, which would maybe be started from almost, you know, from scratch at that point. So that, that's, that's the Ohio-
I mean, I'm not saying, I mean, I'm not, they seem to be doing good work, but basically they, you gave them a project that was, and now they gave you a price that was double, so they didn't exactly come through for what you've asked them to do. So I've been in this same situation with architects before. You have grounds at that point to cease and start over.
Yeah. And Roger and I came from that background, so we've been in the consulting world.
Do they specialize in fire departments? I mean, that's a focus of their expertise, like McAnally does prisons statewide.
It's not just fire department. These guys specialize in renovations as well. They're new in renovations.
So that's their four day, that's their hot spot.
I think they're doing a good job. I mean, what I saw in the last presentation seems good. I just didn't know if we, if there was any other options for a lower cost option.
There, but there are options. It's just reducing the scope of the project. So if we come back and minimize the scope of the project, we don't make the enhancements, we have, you know, less bunk rooms planned out, we reduce the square footage on the additions. So, you know, there are possibilities, but any possibility that we do that reduces cost will reduce the scope of the project, which will then limit our possibilities for future growth. So if we do want to say our max is $3 million, then I'm going to be back in a couple of years asking for a fourth station and $1 million per year annually for nine more guys to staff it, based on growth and the allocation of that facility's, you know, expansion, where this project, as we discussed in, in June, I believe based on its scope and how we've designed it, will allow us to maximize our projections for the next 15 years for dominantly EMS call growth. So like I tell my wife, you can have anything you want, but you can't have everything you want. So I'm sitting here recognizing, you know, our financial concerns, and we can do whatever is in the, you know, in the best interest and what you guys fund for us, but this is what I truly believe is needed and I think has the most efficient design to maximize the current location of Station 1, which the ARC study in 2007 deemed to be the appropriate location for Station 1 for our response times, and to maximize that plot plan with the campus concept with City Hall, and give us that growth for the next 15 years.
I wanted to note that it does say in here, and this is a proposed contract modification, the document Exhibit A I see, it does say that it, the contract or the expenses will not exceed the lump sum without our authorization, which is, you know, obviously something necessary. I do see a couple of what I believe to be typos on here in terms of the project schedule. The procurement bidding is to be completed March 15 to April 5. Is this 2022?
23.
Correct. And the contract award also has 2022 on it. So if this is a legal document, perhaps we should double check and make sure that's-
Yep, so noted.
Thank you.
Chief, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I know June seems like a lifetime ago, but memory serves me that when we discussed this project, we were talking about taking this, you know, up to 25 to 30 years, that at least the, the bones of the building and then, you know, because the present one served us about 50 years already, and that, that's what I'd be looking at is, you know, is this going to serve us for a long, you were talking 15, but I know that you specifically, I'm an attorney, I listen, you were talking about EMS services, but with regard to the rest of the building.
Yeah, the, this building should last, you know, 30 to 50 years.
Okay.
I mean, the, the bones of the current building are in great shape. It's, it's the arteries, you know, the-
Right.
The vessels are poor. So if we're doing a full renovation, doing that on will allow us to maximize that building, and I believe from the construction component, it will have a very long lifespan.
Okay.
Where I talk about 15 years is, is when I'm forecasting our projections for call volume, which is related to staffing, that this building will allow us to fill that the staffing needs based on room and occupancy and size of crew quarters for that timeframe, if not longer, but I can only, I'll say safely, project 15 years out based on-
Right. Okay. Well, and I heard that, so I just wanted to double check that, that there are two, two different components. One is-
Yeah.
What's available, this will accommodate what will be needed for 15 years, but the actual renovation to the building will allow this building to be used for the next 30 to 50 years.
Absolutely.
With obviously some tweaks along the way. Okay.
Okay. I think council may have asked a lot of good questions here. I, I would be curious to know if we would like to proceed since this is a budgeted item. If anything, the price is probably going up instead of down, so I suppose I would make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-45.
All right. Mr. Cavan has moved to adopt the resolution number 2022-45. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number 2022-45. I think we gleaned plenty of goods insufficient information to make an informed decision. This is the way to go. That brings us to ordinance number 2022-23. It's slated for three readings. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I'll ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2022-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 924.17, charges for connections to city sanitary sewage system of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio to eliminate installment payment plans.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes. This is probably a long overdue revision to our codified ordinances, ordinance, whereas we had an initiative about 40 years ago with the annexation of Madisonburg into the City of Worcester, where there was going to be a mass upgrade in sewage tie-ins and finance charges associated with improvements of that annexation, properties involved in that annexation. Since then, we've continued to offer a 25-year financing agreement for residents incurring those type of expenses at 7% interest rate annually. As of Mr. Doherty's arrival in 2003, there were 233 loans on the books, so that was well after, you know, a lot of the loans had been in process from prior years dating back to the 80s. Today, we have 10 loans outstanding for a total of $11,253. So it's served its purpose. It's been a very good resource and tool to those people that might not be eligible for those type of incremental expenses or financing options, but recognizing the City of Worcester is in a lending institution, and these are relatively nominal expenses in today's standards, $2,000 to $3,000 to $4,000. So if a loan was required by the homeowner, they would have options available, home equity loan, credit cards, whatever they would decide. But there is a, there was a significant time value associated with managing those outstanding loans, making the collections if there's a bankruptcy or foreclosure. The good news is, we've managed through it over the, the past 40 years, and we've got it down to a very manageable control point of 10 outstanding loans. And we are not proposing calling those loans. Let them run their course. They'll go into completion, but we just won't finance new, and we've not had any new loan requests as of recent. That's quite obvious. So we're in a position right now to close this, if you will, benefit for the, the mass grouping that we had intended it to serve, and we would change ordinance number 22, or 924.17, charges for connections to the city sanitary sewage system, item C, which is highlighted in our ordinance proposal this evening, and just strike that financing provision and say, thank you, this has been a useful tool. We're moving on and pursue other financing options in the future. Thank you. That's the full explanation of it. I'll open the floor for any questions, but I am prepared tonight to move this to third and final reading.
Well, why didn't you make that motion?
I will make that motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Ansel to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rule?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
And the rules have been suspended. Mr. Ansel, do you have another motion?
I would motion to adopt ordinance 2022-23, Mr. President.
All right. Mr. Ansel's moved to adopt the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Now we can open up for discussion, although it was a different time when this was enacted. Madisonburg was literally in a world of hurt because their septic systems had failed, and their only all turn it was to ask to be annexed in and hooked up, hooked up to our sewer system, and most of them ended up hooking up to the water system as well. And there were a number of residents affected by the fact that their septic systems just didn't meet the existing county code. So I can't imagine that this would ever happen again, and if that's the case, that'll be up to probably a different set of legislature here that decide whether or not they- septic, septic systems just didn't meet the existing county code. So I can't imagine that this would ever happen again. And if that's the case, that'll be up to a, a, probably a different set of legislature here that decide whether or not they would reinvent the wheel by looking at.
It certainly served its purpose. Ms. Knappich?
I do have a few questions. What is the current cost of a connection?
Several factors, you know, a lot of factors.
So for sewer, I think it's $55 front footage. It's basically called availability fee.
Is, do we have a tap-in fee too?
No, just, just.
That's the.
So if it was a 100, 100 feet front footage?
Okay. And then what, when was the last loan?
It was October 1st, 2012.
10 years ago. Then the other question I have is, so if someone is, for some reason, not able to get financing, are there any options? I mean, do we put it on their taxes? Do we place a lien? What would be the city's option if someone says, I can't get that financing from wherever, a bank or?
That's a good question. So we haven't had it for a long time. I think that's, so for instance, just housing subdivision, going up off of Oak Hill Road, the contractor and developers putting in that sewer.
Right.
Therefore, you know, they buy their house, their lot, they're paying, there's no additional pay from the city. We're just taking those over, at least for 10 years. If there was a lot left, and it was over 10 years, then, then we might try to be that. Right. I don't know how many homes in the city. There aren't too many, I think, that are on septic.
Yeah, I guess my question would be if we had to do some, it doesn't apply to, like, existing properties where you are just doing upgrades, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's new.
So this is brand-new connection?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a very, very limited, I can't even remember the last time.
Well, it was years and years ago, so.
Almost as dead.
Thank you.
Well, it would be a case where we might annex someone that's on the, has their septic system, and then they would.
Well, Roger, pull him in.
Oh, yeah. That's why I was looking in his direction, but I wasn't going to call him out.
I remember that.
Obviously, you do not have any compulsion by naming him.
Well, to Ms. Knappich's point, if there was ever another mass annexation, we could certainly review initiating the program. But the onesies and twosies, we're really doing the residents the favor at that point in time because they're in trouble with their septic system. They've had a free ride, and now they have, through emergency requirements and sustainability tie into the system. So it's kind of a quid pro quo. We're doing them a favor. Hopefully, they can afford it at that point in time.
I understand that. I just think about, I would assume that if somebody couldn't, we'd work something out.
Just one other item. So those instances, which do happen every once in a while, but it's been a long time, where these little places, the sewer plant's in front, if they're out of the city, we annex them in, they have, they have two choices. They're coming to us when their septic system has failed. So the health department's telling them, you are either replacing your septic system.
Right.
It's happened those like 10, 15, maybe 20 dollars.
Yeah, 20 grand.
Or, or five, or maybe half of that, you know, $2,500 to $5,000. So it's actually cheaper for them to.
Oh, I understand that.
Anything else?
See no other questions.
All right. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2022, Day 23 passes. Resolution Number 2022-40 is the next item. It'll be presented again by Mr. An, Mr. Ansel. It's slated for three readings. But before I get back to you, Mr. Ansel, I'll turn to Ms. DePaulo and ask her to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2022-40, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds for sludge removal and hauling and allowing for immediate enactment.
And I thought it was a budgeted item.
Do you? Okay. I might have looked at it, at it wrong this morning before I had my first cup of coffee. So if it's budgeted, then we won't need the suspension of the rules here. So I turn it over to you, Mr.
Yes, this is a budgeted item, but we're a point, at a point where we're projected to exceed our budgetary level. So we're asking for additional funding to pay Aggra Sludge, a long-term and reliable sludge handler for the city that have been doing business with the city for many, many years. And this is a particularly challenging contract because there are few and far between sludge haulers, and that's the business that Aggra Sludge is in. They provide an exceptional service. Their rates are competitive, but we're just going to exceed the frequency and the projected activity and volumes for this calendar year. So this will allocate more funds. The original amount was not highlighted. Might Joel or Andre highlight what the original budget amount was?
We, we were thinking it was going to be just under 50.
Okay.
But we had to deal with 50.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay. So we need the service. It's just based on additional volume. And I would motion to adopt Resolution 2022-40.
All right. Mr. Ansel has made a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any discussion? We've, we've had this contract for years, and one of the reasons we had a renovation of our sewer plant was the amount of sludge that we had to have removed was really getting to be astronomical. And some of the improvements we made reduced the amount. I remember specifically, had presses installed to remove the liquid, which helped reduce the cost. But obviously, we're expanding. Our sewer plant is a little creaky because of its age. So it's not unexpected, especially with every other cost going up, and they have costs such as in fuel and other things. So it is what it is.
Is this something that we should consider increasing the budget request for in the future? I, I mean, or is, I mean, is it an anomaly that it's, that it's gone up so high? Or is it?
This one's an anomaly. They, they brought in some, some mobile presses to give us some excess sludge that we had. So that, that's what caused it at this point. We don't anticipate.
What's the excess sludge from?
We had quite a bit of, of sludge in, in our plant, and we had some treatment issues, treating the solids. So we had too much solids in the plant. They were pulling the solids out.
I think another couple of questions if I could. Talk about, other contractors aren't available to complete the job within the timeframe or within the schedule. What is our timeframe or schedule?
So we, we had to have them onsite, but they've been onsite working right now. So we called several contractors. They wouldn't own one of the degrees of response at the time. But they were there, they came. They've been operating, but we knew we were going to exceed the amount. That's why we came to counsel fast.
And you estimate the, the exceeding amount will be $135,000?
Correct.
And I guess, I'm, I'm with Ms. Warden. I don't understand how we went from.
Less.
Less than $50,000 to $135,000 in this timeframe. That's, that's, that's a huge increase. What happened?
We were not anticipating having them to bring in mobile presses.
Because we got sludge we didn't anticipate? Or because we had problems and we didn't anticipate?
Both.
Both.
Was the sludge city sludge or from, from companies? Is it something we can anticipate in the future so that we can avoid paying?
Yes.
Almost $200,000?
Yes. This was, this was, this much was unanticipated. So yes, absolutely.
You expect it to go back down next year? Or as Ms. Warden asked?
I don't expect to have this particular expense at all. You know, unless we're doing something associated with the improvements that Mr. Byten dyke had mentioned, but that won't be the same as this.
Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2022-40 passes. We have Resolution Number 2022-41. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. My notes indicate this is slated for three readings, Mr. Ansel. Before I again get back to you, I'll ask Ms. DePaulo to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2022-41, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with lowest and best bidder for the replacement of the water line and storm sewers on Robin Hood Drive, Friar Tuck Circle, and Little John Lane, and allowing for immediate enactment. And again, I have it as budgeted.
It is budgeted.
Okay. I don't know how I got.
I don't know what you're reading there.
I don't know. So anyways, Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is a long overdue infrastructure improvement, replacement concerning Robin Hood, Friar Tuck, and Little John water lines and storm sewers. And again, this is a budgeted item. The estimate cost for repairs or placement are $1 million, 730 from the water fund, 245 from the storm sewer fund, and 25 from the sanitary sewer fund. See, the specifications, as highlighted, show 3,440 linear feet of six-inch cast iron that has had a history of breaks and repairs. It's going to be replaced with an eight-inch ductile iron pipe. 54 water services and nine hydrants will be replaced also in this initiative with an additional 1,500 linear feet of the corrugated metal storm sewer and eliminating five shared sanitary laterals. So Roger's here if there's any specification questions associated with these repairs. But again, a long overdue. I would say that those were originally installed in, what, the 50s in that area, somewhere around that timeframe. So we've got good performance up to this date, but the cost justification, it's just part of our ongoing planned upgrades and replacements throughout the city. So it was time for us to address this in that region of the city. And again, it's a budgeted item. We have accrued reserves to offset this, and it will be initiated in 2023. So Roger's here if you have any questions, technical questions, but we all are familiar with that area. And it's, it's going to be a good initiative, and we commend our team for having those on the radar screen and a very systematic approach to those type of replacements and repairs. So with that, I would motion to adopt Resolution 2022-41.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussion?
I just have a question for Mr. Koberarsik. At this point is, what's the, I mean, what are you guys seeing from the city standpoint on availability of ductile iron?
84 weeks.
You say 84?
Eighty-four months. Eighty-four months. So if we order this now, we're lucky if we're going to do it next year.
Right. What about alternative products?
There is none. We're ductile iron city.
Or Roger, 84 weeks, not 84?
Eighty-four months, I meant.
Weeks.
Weeks.
Months.
That's seven years.
Seven years.
It's, it's, yeah, weeks, weeks.
Yes. That was Mr. Myers and his calculator.
It's just math. I'm sorry. Nine and a half.
Okay. Well, in light of that response, I, I mean, I have to ask the question again. So what, why, I mean, at this point, what's the differentiation between ductile iron and potential other waterline products that are out there?
Well, right now, the city crews have everything for ductile iron. They've got all extra parts, all the expertise to repair ductile iron. If you bring in another material, then they're going to have to stock two separate sets of repair products and go through training for this other material.
Very good question, though.
But what's the timeframe in which the product would begin to see failure?
I don't know what the timeframe is for plastic.
Roger, with the price, we did some, we did some plastic for some force made, and the cost was significantly more than our typical.
It was, yeah, compared to ductile, it's the same price or a little more.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
All right. Resolution Number 2022, Day 41 passes. Turn our attention to Resolution Number 2022, Day, or did I say 2022, Day 41? That's what it should have been. But this is Resolution Number 2022, Day 42, presented by Ms. Warden. This one, I think I got right. It's a budgeted item. But before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I'll ask Mr. Paul to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2022-42, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with West Erie Realty Solutions LTD for professional design services related to the Worcester Loop 3 multi-use path and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is a request, right, by the city to enter into contract with West Erie Realty Solutions in order for them to conduct professional services for our Loop 3 multi-use path, or the bike path, as it's more commonly called. The contract will cover title research and right-of-way acquisition services for 56 properties that are projected to be affected by this project. West Erie Realty Solutions is pre-qualified by ODOT to perform such services. And so that really streamlines the process. And them being pre-qualified will expedite all of the services that we're requesting from them. The project isn't slated to go to bid until November of 2024, but the negotiations can apparently take upwards of 18 to 24 months. And in addition, we have to meet certain scheduling requirements in order to use the ODOT funds that are slated for this construction project. So it's important that we secure our contract with West Erie at this time. The total cost for the right-of-way acquisition services for the project is $266,840. It's a one-time capital expense, which Mr. Byten dyke stated is budgeted, and it will not affect the city's operating budget. I motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Discussion, questions, comments?
What, which streets is this affected?
There's a map.
It's along Milltown Road from Friendsville to Melrose. And then there's two pieces on Melrose, one going south, one going north.
Beautiful.
It loops together the last bike trail on Friendsville. We've got a piece already on Melrose to the south. So we're connected to that, and then we're going to connect to the piece that we're doing now on, on Melrose, north of Milltown.
Oh.
So it's kind of like the, the missing link to get everything tied together from one side of the city to the other.
Neat.
We did receive about 200, I'm sorry, $836,000 from a transportation alternative program grant that Jonathan Malley was instrumental in achieving for us. It brings federal dollars in and also dollars generated from turnpike costs.
Very good.
So it's bringing a lot of money back into our community, and it is tying together these numerous trails that we have going around our city now, and the bike, the alternative trails, walking, biking, hiking, whatever you want to call it.
Is this the same design firm that we used for the other parts of the loop?
I did get a price from those people, and they were a little higher.
Okay. Thank you.
Fifty-six properties seems to be a lot. There are fifty-six properties in that corridor that's going to acquire right-of-way acquisition. How, how long is the extension? Two miles?
I'm not sure. Over a mile, yeah, mile and a half, something like that.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's just the process takes so long because they've got to go through certain steps. So if we start now, hopefully, it'll be earlier to get it bid out. But the sooner we start, the better off we are.
Seeing nothing else, Ms. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty-two passes. I'll get back to you in a minute, Ms. Warden. I will have Mr. Apollo read the title of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty-three.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty-three. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for pavement repairs on certain city streets and allowing for immediate enactment.
And I just checked. This is slated for three readings. Floor is yours, Ms. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Beidenike. So this is a request to advertise and award a contract to the lowest and best bidder for resurfacing and pavement repairs, which I think it makes me cringe to think of, given everything we have going on right now. But this is slated for next year. So it's the streets including West Larwell from Liberty to Market, East Henry Street from Market to Beaver, East South Street from Market to Beaver, Guyer's Chapel from Long Road to Bendon, and Back Whorville Drive from 585 to Guyer's Chapel, as well as Smithville Western from Route eighty-three to Cleveland Road. The project will include the milling of existing surfaces, manhole and water valve box adjustments, new asphalt and paving marking, and pavement markings. All of the engineering, design, construction, and administration and inspection will be performed in-house by our very capable engineering staff. The estimated cost is one million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nearly half of which will be covered by the ODOT large city funds. And the remaining five hundred and seventy-eight thousand will be paid from local funds. Mr. Koberarsik and the rest of the city's engineering department assess roadway conditions and maintenance and resurfacing project years in advance. These have been scheduled to be resurfaced next year in order to prevent further deterioration and to reduce road maintenance costs. And I know that they would like to seek bids as soon as possible. So I would make a motion to place this on third and final reading this evening.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
All right. The rules have been suspended. I turn to you again, Ms. Warden.
As we know, Mr. Koberarsik's here this evening. So if anyone has any questions, we can discuss those with him. But I would make a motion to adopt immediately.
All right. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Mr. Koberarsik? Or Ms. Knappich?
Quick question. Is the reason why we're bidding this before we're budgeting it is so that we can get the prices locked in now before they go up too much?
That's, yeah, that's the goal.
Okay. Thanks.
It's actually the last group of streets that we can use the LPA money on.
Oh.
So we could, you know, I think it's been eight years we've been paving those streets.
It's been a good run. Tapping those funds.
Then we can start all over again.
Good. Good.
Anytime we can use at least partially someone else's money.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a lot of half-off work done through that process.
What's, what's the total length mileage?
I don't know what the length is.
Okay. I was just curious.
Many miles.
Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty-three passes. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty-four will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It's slated for three readings. Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title of this resolution?
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty-four. A resolution petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County, Ohio for a change of township lines to conform with the corporation limits of the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, please. Or sir.
Thank you, Mr. Beidenike. This again is another one that's got a timing issue involved with it in that we can't act on this any earlier than our next meeting on the seventeenth of October. However, we've got a window where it's got to then be adopted before November twenty-first. So we'll leave it on first reading tonight. Once this annexation goes through, the land that we're bringing in has the privilege of being both in Kilbuck Township and Wayne Township, subject to taxation by both entities, but no services being provided by Wayne Township. So as you might imagine, the properties affected are not benefited by that arrangement. And it's kind of a procedural matter to conform these properties so that the boundary of the city matches the annexation boundary, and that property will be removed from Wayne Township and made part of Kilbuck Township. And no tax dollars involved. In fact, it's, it's going to generate tax dollars for the city.
Well, it makes the auditor happy because we have some annexations in this county where even though it's been annexed into the municipality, the boundaries are still out in the township. And we have like split precincts where, and it just causes a headache for not only our auditor, but the Board of Elections.
I was going to mention the Board of Elections as well.
Hold their hair out when that happens. So do you have a motion for us? Oh, we can't because the annexation isn't complete.
We're going to leave that right where it's at.
Yep. So we'll consider resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty-four as having its first reading. And then we're revisiting our bridge inspection resolution, which will be presented by Ms. Warden. And it just had to be amended to change some language as to who was authorized, assigned, basically. Before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I will ask Mr. Apollo for the last time to read a piece of legislation.
Amended resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three. A resolution authorizing Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for annual bridge inspections within the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is simply an amendment to the resolution that we passed at our very last council meeting. The resolution authorizes the city to enter into a cooperative agreement with ODOT for annual bridge inspections within the city of Worcester. So Section Six of the original resolution names a representative of the city administration to provide written authorization for the project. Mr. Koberarsik was originally listed, and this amendment changes that representative to the city's Director of Administration, also an unnamed person. So just to, I guess, make it much easier to abide by regardless of any changes that might come our way. All other sections of the legislation remain as previously approved, and so I would make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
When I saw the amendment, I thought maybe Mr. Koberarsik was attempting a municipal.
He doesn't want to do it.
A coup. A coup. It's those silent types you got to watch out for.
He always wanted to control the bridges.
So anything further? If not, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes, again.
All right. Amended resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three passes. No public here to comment, so we'll move right to council. So, Mr. Sanders, we'll kick it off with you.
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
Mayor Brenneman, it was a little bit of a long agenda. We got through it in an hour, though. So we're getting better at this crap. I have nothing to add. Thank you for coming, everybody.
Ms. Knappich?
I was just, I, I got a couple of phone calls this weekend about rounded, what I call roundabout etiquette. Is there something we can do? I don't know. Put it into utility bills, have the newspaper print once again what is correct roundabout etiquette as far as who goes and how they go and when they go. And God forbid, don't ever let us get those double roundabouts where we'll all be in trouble. So if we could do that, it would be appreciated.
Sure, I'd ask. There's a nice link to a Dublin video on how to drive a roundabout. It's done by some grade school kids down in Melbourne. It's a nice one.
Let's plagiarize it and put it on our loop.
Grade school kids can figure this out.
Sure. Let's put a link to it on, on the site. And anybody who is having.
Public information.
Public information, having problems negotiating or the roundabouts or want to refer someone else to that link because they're not abiding by the roundabout etiquette, as I call it. That would be great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
I have to tell you, Ms. Knappich, I am the roundabout expert. We have three roundabouts within a quarter of a mile from my residence, and I can stream right through them, no problem. So if there's anybody that needs tutorials, I'm happy to assist. Just email me.
Perfect lessons.
All joking aside, I have nothing more this evening, Mr. President.
All right. Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I would just like to echo what the mayor said in his presentation this evening. I was at Worcester Fest quite a bit this weekend, and everything was put on very, very well, very organized. There were some new additions, I believe, in technology that, that I noticed anyways. And I thought that was a really great addition. I know some people who came in from out of town to enjoy it for the first time, and they were thrilled and very excited about, you know, all the participation from the community and the various businesses. So well done to the Chamber of Commerce and everyone that, that participated.
Mr. Reynolds?
Well, just following up on Ms. Knappich's comment. Mr. Brenneman and I may have been ahead of our time because a year ago, we're both Kiwanians, and there's some others here. When we did Safety Town, you know, this kids adventure thing with the big wheels and the things, we joked about setting up a roundabout there. So maybe that's the future. We got to train people young.
That's right.
Make that part of the training. So this, that could be your legacy, Mr. Brenneman.
I'll be biting for you.
Bob Roundabout Brenneman.
Well, I want to see the mayor.
That nickname could stick.
I want to see the mayor and Mr. Reynolds on Big Wheels. Going around Safety Town, roundabouts. Now, that is a video I might pay for. Mr. Kevin, then we'll give you the last word.
Oh, and the last word is yield. That's the only thing you need to know about a roundabout. You yield going in and you get off wherever you want to go. You can keep, you can stay on if you want. But just yield going in, and that's all you have to remember.
Mr. Ansel, I see you moved to.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
There's a second. Second, Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned.